Madam Secretary, I'd like to report that all council members are present tonight, so we have a quorum. Therefore, I'll start the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome all citizens to the meeting tonight. One thing I'd like to say when we get to Citizens Communication, Item Two, if you're here to speak to something that's in Item C at a public hearing, please reserve your comments until that time. So now we'll move on to items from council.
I had brought up about National Night Out. It's the first Tuesday in October, and I asked if we could change the meeting because I think it would be gr-- I would like to go to my local party, and I'd like to move the meeting to a different-- if it's Wednesday or Thursday or whatever that means.
We could also maybe look at having a lighter agenda, so it was a shorter meeting. That would keep it on schedule for the public that's used to us meeting.
You have to talk to him.
Yeah, it's just another thought on it.
Well, and at that point, we will need to keep in mind the flow. So, for instance, we have the anti-camping ordinance coming back for a second reading at the second meeting in September, which would mean the third reading would be at this first meeting in October. So just keep that in mind if we want to have a light agenda, the first meeting in October, that would be the third reading of the anti-camping ordinance. And I think in terms of president, I think council has simply just done, I guess unofficially or informally agreed to move a council meeting?
On-- when we've had holidays in the past, such as New Year's Day, a couple of years ago, y'all will remember, we simply canceled the meeting on the Tuesday night and rescheduled it for later that week on a Thursday. So essentially, legally what you're doing is canceling the regular meeting and calling a special meeting, but it has the same effect as simply postponing it.
There's a consensus, I'd like to move the meeting.
Historically speaking, it seems that once we get through budget, if-- correct me if I'm wrong, but meetings have been pretty short immediately afterwards. It seems historically speaking.
Yeah, but we weren't voting on an anti-camping ordinance.
Well, if it gets to a third vote, we will have talked about it as a proposed ordinance. We will have talked about it as a first vote. We will have talked about it again tonight as an education part. We would have talked about it as a second vote, and we'd be at a third vote. So I don't want to beat a dead horse, but we've gone through this extensively. We may go through it extensively more. I would hope not.
Well, to me, it doesn't matter either way, if you want to move it or if you want to leave it that day.
Can we make a decision next meeting?
That's what I'd prefer, because I just spent all day trying to work my schedule around our meetings, because I'm gonna have to do a lot of travel on one particular job of mine that involves going up to the Fort Worth area.
Well, and we do have a special meeting this Thursday?
Right.
And so maybe, I don't know if it'd be appropriate for that to be re-brought back up under Items from Council?
I would prefer it then, because like I said, I just spent a long part of my day working my schedule around council meetings, because I don't want to miss a council meeting.
Give everybody a chance to look at their calendars and come back with a clear idea of whether they're free during that week.
That's also the weekend following that week is Boot Fest, which involves an awful lot of city employees, and I want to be sensitive to that.
I would just like to call possible the short-meeting approach, perhaps. But any other items from council? I see there's another item on here about wild animals.
It was brought to my attention from a letter from the city manager, and I did have a lady call me about the issue. She must be related to the people who wrote the letter, I don't know that for a fact, but I did discuss it with her. I think Jesus could fill in on the letter and where we are with it and where we are with the Health Department, and then I'd like to chime in.
Sure. Well, in my understanding, I'll just go ahead and summarize what has happened. So as you are aware, we received a letter from PETA related to a circus that will be in town at the community center in mid-September, and they brought to our attention the fact that we have some verbatim in our code that outlaws, for lack of a better term, wild animals. And so they wanted to, in essence, request that we enforce the ordinance and communicate to the circus that they are not allowed to bring animals to the show, to Victoria. And in consultation with our city attorney, we determined that there could be some improvement to the language in our code to clarify what our overall policy is on this matter. We do have language in our code that allows for circuses, and so the issue of there being a circus in town is not the issue, but it's the animal component to it. And so we, again, consulted with our city attorney, consulted with David at the Health Department, and we all agreed to continue looking into clarifying the language in our code so that it's a bit more clear as to what our position is as it relates to circuses coming into town that bring animals. In the interim, in the lack of that clarification in the code, we've sort of makeshift the process, and so when the circus comes into town, members from the Health Department will go out and inspect, for lack of a better term, the conditions of the animals, and if any irregularities are found, we'll shut them down. That's simple. And so that was what we, in essence, communicated to them in our response to them. But we have received communication from PETA members related to their desire to have us just ban animals from circuses coming to Victoria. And that was the information that was shared with council.
And I wanted that out there in the public, because I think that's adequate. But there are cities that have banned circuses.
Correct.
And that's up to council. But until we change the language, we need to go with what we have right now. And I think working with the Health Department is the right way to go.
There are cities that have banned animals. There's also cities that actually formalize even having a permit for a circus that stipulates a specific process, which it's kind of what we're doing now, kind of at an out-hawk basis, but there are ways to formalize that in the code or some type of process or procedure. And so we can certainly head in that direction, because I think both Thomas and I do agree that the code needs clarification regardless of what we end up doing. And so right now, we're both headed in the direction of clarifying to establish a process for circuses to come into town and have animals, but we ensure that it's in a safe environment. That's kind of the sense that I've gotten from everybody.
Yep.
And so that's the clarification that we'll proceed with. David is here, and so if he did have any questions related to what they plan to do when the circus comes in town, I'm sure he's available to answer those. But we are working behind the scenes, if you will, on bringing not only that change to the code, but he's also spearheading an effort to recommend additional changes to our animal-related codes to help with, I guess, enforcement and kind of modernizing them a bit. So he's spearheading that effort for us.
Good. Any other items from council?
No.
Hearing none, we'll move into Citizens Communication. Anyone having anything to bring before council tonight, except on the public hearing portion, please step forward. Seeing none, we'll move into items for public hearing.
Mayor and council, there are two items listed for public hearing tonight. Neither of them are action items. We are only having public hearings. The first is the Second Public Hearing on the City of Victoria Budget for Fiscal Year 2019-2020 on September 3, 2019, at 5:00 p.m. at City Council Chambers 107, West Wanlin Street.
Right on Item C1, I'd open the public hearing on that matter. Anyone here to speak to Item C1, please step forward. Seeing none, I'll close that public hearing.
Item C2 is the Second Public Hearing on the 2019-2020 City of Victoria Tax Rate on September 3, 2019, 5:00 p.m. here at City Council Chambers 107, West Wanlin Street, which is proposed at a rate of $0.6115 per $100 evaluation.
Yeah, we'll now open a public hearing on Item C2. Anyone wanting to speak to that matter, please step forward. Seeing none, I will close that public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, that brings us to the consent agenda, and if I can ask a procedural question of council, there has been some discussion lately about whether or not we should read the consent agenda items out loud. And I think I'd like clarification from council, kind of what is the will of council, whether we continue to read those out loud. Our recent practice has become that we do not read them out loud. Many cities do not read the consent agenda items out loud. The consent agenda is designed as a way to bring efficiency to the meeting for items that are not expected for discussion. And so it is common in some places to simply announce that we're approving the consent agenda and move on. Those items are available to the public if they want to get a copy of the agenda. Prior to that, our practice had been to read the list of items in the meeting and then approve them as a single effort. Since there was some discussion at the meeting two weeks ago when I wasn't here, I thought I'd ask for clarification about what y'all would like to see happen going forward.
I had asked that we read them, and I think Ms. Scott had also confirmed, so I, for one, would like to have them read.
I agree. I think a lot of people watch our televised meetings, which is great. I don't have very many people coming up to me and saying, "I was reading in your packet that such and such," but I have a lot of people that tell me they see the meetings.
My recollection is that was kind of the will of council at the last meeting, so I think we-- I would prefer that they be read.
Okay, that's easy enough. I think we've got a clear direction, but I wanted to put that on the table since the process seemed to be in fluctuation. All right, so the consent agenda includes five items tonight that'll be approved by a single vote. First, the approval of minutes of the regular meeting of August 20, 2019. Second is a resolution appointing one council member to serve as the General Assembly of the Golden Crescent Regional Planning Commission, one council member to serve as the General Assembly and Board of Directors endorsing Mayor Proton Josephine Solis's service as the first vice president on the Executive Committee and declaring an effective date. Oh, I'm sorry, the third item, I'm supposed to read them all.
Yeah. The third item is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an interlocal agreement with the Golden Crescent Regional Planning Commission for the operation of a transit system, authorizing the expenditure of city funds for transit system in the amount of $209,000 and declaring an effective date. The fourth is a resolution granting a variance to Section 21-58D and Section 21-59D, which requires an extension of public water and wastewater lines in rural subdivisions where public water and sewer are available within one mile of the tract to allow a replat of Lot 10, Block 4 of Capstone Estates, Phase 3, Section 2, owned by Brian Ferguson, and declaring an effective date. And the fifth and final is a resolution granting a variance with conditions to Section 21-82A3, which requires a 20-foot building setback for detached single-family residences in urban subdivisions for property located at 112 Myra Lane, owned by Teresa De Harina, and declaring an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Item E1 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a services agreement with the Victoria Main Street program and declaring an effective date.
I move to accept item E1.
Second.
Been a motion and a second to approve item E1. Is there any discussion on this matter?
I'll just throw out there that I'd be happy to answer any questions council may have. This is obviously consistent with conversations that we've had regarding the city being more involved with Main Street.
Any questions from council? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of item E1s, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Item E2 is a resolution supporting the efforts undertaken now and in the future by the Navigation and Canal Commission of the Victoria County Navigation District to challenge FEMA's levy analysis and mapping procedures as applied to Victoria County generally and to the properties along the Channel 2 Victoria specifically, and pledging to continue support for the overall good and benefit of the City of Victoria and its citizens, and declaring an effective date. And Mayor, prior to us putting this item on the floor for discussion, I'd like to recess into executive session. I have some attorney-client privileged information that I'd like to share with council.
Okay, we'll do that now.
Yeah, so the city council will recess now at 5:14 p.m. for executive session on the third day of September 2019. The subject matter of the executive session deliberation is as follows. Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, consultation with an attorney on a matter involving pending or contemplated litigation or other matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state bar of Texas clearly conflicts with the Texas Civil Media Act. Thank you. Thank you.
So we're back in open session at 5:33 PM. Mayor, before we, we take this item back up, the finance director reminded me of something that I neglected after the public hearing on the tax rate. We need to go ahead and announce the date at which we will vote on the tax rates. And so the votes on the tax rate will take place on September 5th at 5:00 PM here in City Council Chambers. The second vote will take place on September 10th here in City Council Chambers at 5:00 PM. And the third and final vote will take place on September 17th here in City Council Chambers at 5:00 PM. Thank you, Gilbert. So mayor and council, we were looking at item E2, which is a resolution supporting the efforts undertaken now and in the future by the Navigation and Canal Commission of the City, of the Victoria County Navigation District to challenge FEMA's levy analysis and mapping procedures as applied to Victoria County generally and to the properties along the Channel 2 Victoria specifically, and pledging to continue support for the overall good and benefit of the City of Victoria and its citizens, and declaring an effective date.
I move we adopt E2.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adopt item E2. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Item E3 is a resolution awarding a bid for the fiscal year 2019 striping project at various locations to Pavement Markings Incorporated for their low bid of $189,471.70, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the project and declaring an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept item E3. Any discussion on that matter?
Concerning other streets, we wanted to add. We came in under budget.
I think we're doing that. We're doing that. Donald can address the.
Yes, sir. We've, we've added a, a few streets, and those are namely Red River from Vine to Main, Goodwin from Main to Navarro.
Do it, do it a little slower. I have to.
I'm sorry. Here, I can, I can also give y'all a little visual.
Because I'm sure there are a lot, so.
I'll pass it.
So this map is being passed out. The, the streets that are in blue are streets that we know we can add with the $47,000 that are additional. And the ones in green are just kind of backups in case we can do a little bit more. But starting at the top there on the north, the first one is, sorry, let me get back to that page, is Red River from Vine to Main. Coming down south to the next blue one, that one is Goodwin from Main to Navarro. And then coming down again south to the next blue one, that is Water Street from Moody to the railroad tracks. And then on the very far southeast side of the map in blue is Pleasant Green from Laurent to Wanlin. And then we have some additional funding still left over. The two green ones, starting on the west side of the map, are Wanlin from Laurent to Main. And the final one is Laurent, I'm sorry, Wanlin from Ben Wilson to US 59. So those are the ones that we're planning to add with the money we have available.
Thank you.
While you're there, do we encourage the highway department to re-stripe?
Absolutely.
Some of them on Navarro are getting kind of crosswalks and stuff are worn.
Sure.
They use that striping, that.
And is there a particular?
Blue down material?
Is there a particular section?
Well, I think I've noticed the one at, say, Navarro and Sam Houston, it's kind of, gets worn.
Right, so.
You just don't notice them that much.
Very, in December, Tech dot's going to let a project to reclaim and overlay that entire section from Loop 463 all the way to, I think, Airline, I believe. And so after that's done, they will put fresh stripe on it. That whole section will get redone.
Good, thank you. So they're going to do that before they put in the medians?
They will do that after they put the medians in. They can put the medians in first, and immediately after that, they'll, they'll put in the, put in the hot mix streets.
Thank you.
Sure.
So that median project is.
Median project will, will let about the same time. It'll be, as it's being constructed, they will finalize all the plans on the, on the reclaim overlay and then get that going right behind it.
And I think technically there's a third project that will let around the same time related to sidewalks?
Yes, sir, that's correct. Those will all be kind of led at the same time and done, all in conjunction.
Okay, thank you.
I think the packet indicated the striping is a first year of a three-year cycle that you hope to. I won't call it a cycle. Well, it says cycle. But there would be more next year and, and the year after.
There's another 210,000 in the budget proposed for next year to do more streets.
I'm pretty sure we'll get some calls from people with some ideas.
Correct, absolutely.
Yeah.
If you, if you do, pass those along to us. We'll, we'll be happy to hit them. Thank you.
Any further discussion on item E3? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Mayor, that takes us to the city manager reports. And I'd like to make a procedural point for members of council. This anti-camping ordinance that is being considered by council is not on the agenda tonight. It is only a discussion item that is here. And just for clarification, Robert's Rules of Order would say that we're not going to bring up the discussion of that item. We're not going to take action on that item. We're not going to deliberate among ourselves on that item. But if anyone has a question that they would like to see answered, we can have a discussion related to that item as long as it doesn't kind of turn the corner into a discussion of what should be done in terms of voting on that, one way or the other.
Since it's the city manager report, would you like to begin?
Sure, I'll, I'll just.
With the items to informational, items that you're aware of.
Certainly. Well, I know that when the item was tabled at the last meeting, it was because of there being questions. And some of the questions that I have received and staff has received since that meeting revolve around the, I guess, enforcement aspect of the ordinance. And you heard last from the police chief at the very beginning when the original ordinance was proposed, which would encompass the entire city. But we haven't heard from the police chief as it relates to the implementation under the updated ordinance. And so at minimum, strictly from an informative standpoint, maybe not necessarily for major discussion, but just from an educational, informative standpoint, we figured it'd be, it'd be wise to allow the police chief to address, address that and give his updated opinion on the matter.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, members of city council. I am speaking tonight regarding the anti-camping ordinance, and specifically the enforceability from a law enforcement perspective. I did give an opinion. I gave you some insight as to the original anti-camping ordinance as proposed then. Since then, it's been amended, changed. So now I'm going to speak to the proposed ordinance that's in front of you now. I do believe, if you look at this ordinance, that it is more easily enforceable from a law enforcement perspective. It's not a citywide ban, and it does allow for some other options. It does give officers, a very important point, it does give officers probable cause to actually go to a scene and conduct an investigation, whereas previously, if there was no law on the books concerning anti-camping, officers would have to be left to their own design in terms of being able to develop probable cause to initiate an investigation, to further look into any type of situation. So by virtue of having this ordinance, now the officers are within legal standard to be able to have probable cause to actually go and conduct an investigation. I anticipate that once these contacts occur, officers will do an assessment, an investigation, and then assessment as to the call and, you know, develop an opinion based on what they're seeing in terms of the evidence at hand. I think once that that occurs, officers will still maintain discretion to actually solve an issue. And there are a wide variety of, of different ways in which they can do that. So this does allow them the discretion to actually solve the problem. And the way that officers will look at this, it's a neighborhood quality of life issue. And so officers will be seeking to solve the problem, and not necessarily would it result in someone's arrest. I expect in most cases, what you would see is the officers would make a verbal notification, in a sense, an advisal, that the person may be in violation of the ordinance, and that they would be asked most likely to move along. And with that comes two things. One, we put them on notice that they're violating the ordinance. And that's important for us if we have to take some additional steps later on. But two, it would also be an opportunity where the officers could actually advise them as to where they could go where they would not be in violation of, of the ordinance. So I think it does provide the officers with that ability to do that. In the event that we, that the person re-offends, let's say we get called back out there again, person did not listen to the advisal, the officers would have to take some additional steps to perhaps solve the problem. And that could occlude citations and/or arrest, or another advisal to, to move along. Again, it's within the officer's discretion to do so. This, the one last point that, that I would make is this ordinance, like the other one, would be problematic when officers encounter individuals from the homeless population that are suffering from mental illness. That doesn't change. We still are faced with the same larger issue concerning mental illness, and that would be the same type of problem we'll run into with this one. So, but I do see, from the perspective of an enforceability, that this one is, is much more easily enforced given the current situation and current proposed ordinance. And I'm certainly available to answer any questions if you have any.
Is it possible when, on the mental ill, illness portion, how many mental health officers do you have, chief?
We have two, and the county has, I believe it's five, up to, up to five. I don't know if all those have been filled yet, but that's the plan. And that's a seven-county region approach with the House Bill 13 funding the, the county's portion of the mental health officer program.
I know there was more funding given in the last legislature.
Yes.
Have you spoken with Gulf Ben to see if there'll be any more funds for more mental health officers?
Of course, you know, the Gulf Ben has indicated to me that, you know, they can't speak directly to that, but they feel very favorably that, that both the pest grant and the HB 13 will continue to be funded.
So as a policy there, they would be available for your officers to direct in that event that they suspect that it's mental illness is involved?
Yes.
And what's the process if they identify this person is, needs mental help or whatever? What's the process after that?
Process then, the way that, the way the process works right now is if the individual is not known to Gulf Ben, if the individual is not known to our mental health officers, that, that occurs. Typically, our mental health officers respond to calls for service involving individuals that are suspected of being mentally ill or in crisis. From that moment on, the, the goal of the program is to reduce criminality of, of mental illness. And so our mental health officers are very engaged with trying to look at the individual from a non-criminal perspective and try to leverage the available services that are, are available out to help the, that soft handoff approach to allow them to get services that they need. It is difficult. I will tell you that there are some major challenges within our region as it relates to servicing mentally ill. You've heard about many of those already. But the officers, in my opinion, have done a really good job of integrating into those communities and help solve some of those issues.
Yeah, but you didn't answer my question. If a person, the mental health officer identifies a person as needing help, then what happens? Where do they go from there? Do they go to the hospital? Do they go to Gulf Ben?
If they're in crisis and there's an emergency detention, basically warrant issued from an officer, and the officer has to believe that there's a threat to their safety or the safety of somebody else's, and it's immediate, they would be, they're supposed to immediately take that individual to a state-run hospital. Before they go there, they have to be cleared medically, so they go to a local hospital where a medical clearance is conducted. Then Gulf Ben integrates their caseworker, caseworker responds to the hospital, does an evaluation. And from there, Gulf Ben, working with the mental health officers, attempts to, if the decision is made, to try to find services for that individual, let's say Ash or Sash, which is San Antonio or Austin, that they'll work with those hospitals to try to bring that individual for additional psychiatric treatment. That doesn't always work. There are oftentimes situations where there's no beds. We're competing with a lot of agencies, a lot of jurisdictions around the San Antonio area. And so there are times when that doesn't occur. And if it doesn't occur, what may happen is Gulf Ben may do a action plan, a safety plan with that individual, and the individual is released again. But if that occurs, it's, it's usually anywhere between eight to 24 hours later. No hard and fast results all the time.
What percentage of people actually get help?
I believe it's better now. But I think what's happening, in my opinion, well, the data that I'm looking at, just in the wellness checks that the officers are doing, and that is a proactive approach where they're actually going out and knocking on the door and contacting the individual and asking them how they're doing, if they need anything, are you taking your meds? That, does it sound like it's doing a lot? And but in fact, I think it's solving a lot of people before they go into crisis and need the resources from the police department or the sheriff. I don't know. I, I don't have a guess on a, a percentage, though.
Well, I don't think it's a perfect process, but I think it's a lot better than it was three or four years ago when all this started. So I think we're making slow progress.
I would concur with that.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I don't have anything else to report.
Any other questions for staff? Hearing none, I think we can close out the city manager's report. There's no work session involved. I think we've already had our.
That's correct.
Executive session. So hearing no other business?